This is Monday, May 8th, 7:00 PM in the Nashville High North Boardroom. The Board of Education will call the meeting to order and begin with a roll call. Please, Ms. Van Twyver.
Mrs. Oden. Dr. Murataki.
Here.
Ms. Van Twyver is here. Mr. Halliwell.
Here.
Mrs. -- Mr. Mosier.
I'm here.
Mrs. Ziem.
Here.
Ms. Hohensie.
Here.
Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mr. Farrington.
Here.
We also have Dr. Brown, Mr. Fredrickson, Mr. Boucher, Mr. Donovan, Ms. Thomasetti. Is she here?
Yes.
Oh, there you -- couldn't see you, I'm sorry. And Mr. McIntyre. We have a full house.
Excellent, thank you. We'll continue with the -- Ms. Van Twyver reading the prayer, and Mr. Halliwell could lead us in the pledge, please.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Positions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started with our business this evening, we have a couple of -- actually, we have a recognition and a presentation. First, our recognition. We have with us this evening Stacy Colonna from -- as a representative from Prudential who has a presentation for one of our students.
Thank you and good evening. It's a great pleasure to be here tonight to honor a very special young woman. My company, Prudential Financial, in partnership with the National Association of Secondary School Principals, sponsors a national awards program to honor middle school and high school students for outstanding volunteer service. All over the United States, young people are using their creativity and compassion to improve their own communities and the communities of others. We hope that by identifying and honoring these young volunteers and holding them up as role models, others will be inspired to volunteer too. Thousands of young people across the country were considered for the 2017 Prudential Spirit of Community Awards. From all of these, a select few from each state and the District at Columbia have been selected for special recognition. Here in New Hampshire, I am delighted to report that one of our distinguished finalists in this year's program is your own Jillian McGregor. Jillian, would you please come forward? Jillian has promoted a love of computing in younger girls by mentoring the first all-girl first LEGO league at her local Boys and Girls Club, teaching coding to middle schools and offering a summer camp that later evolved into an after-school computer club. Jillian, to honor your accomplishments, I would like to present you with an engraved Prudential Spirit of Community bronze medallion in recognition of your outstanding community Jillian, on behalf of everyone involved in the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards, congratulations on a well-deserved honor.
Thank you.[284.02][284.02](APPLAUSE).
Jillian had won some other awards that you brought tonight that you'd like to present to the school, if that would be okay?
Can you start over, please?
Yeah, sorry. Jillian through some Women in Technology had received some awards over this past week. I think Ms. Van Twyver might have been aware of the events that she had won, so she was just wondering if she could present those to the school while she was here tonight.
So, just quickly, a couple weekends ago, I and three other students, as well as one teacher from the Nashua community, were at an event for the National Center for Women in Information Technology. It was the Affiliate Awards Ceremony up at UNH Manchester. And myself, Lorna Spargo, who won the Educator Award, Kimberly Guero, Shannon McInnis, and Julia Zhang, all were awarded various awards from the National Center for Women in Information Technology. So, I will be kind of representing them tonight and present the awards to Mr. Richard.
That's why you wanted to do this, Keith.[368.62][368.62](LAUGHING). Well, thank you very much, Jillian, and congratulations on your award. Very well deserved. And if you'd like to sneak out, you can. You're more than welcome to stay, but we always offer that opportunity to folks. Okay, next we have -- that was a nice lead-in for you there, Mr. Richard. We have a presentation on competency-based grading, kind of an update, I guess, is a better way to put it, from Keith and Mary Ann and Sarah, I guess, are going to be involved in this. And I guess the best way to do it is, what I'd like to do is like to have you -- give you the opportunity to go all the way through, and then if we have board members with questions, then we can entertain those at the end, and I'm going to get out of the way.
Okay. Sounds good.
Are there copies?
Do we make copies for this? I thought it got emailed out, did it not get sent out? I can make copies.
No, that's okay.
I'm sorry.
Just, there had been discussion.
Yeah, I apologize.
Yeah, you have them.
Yeah, they're helpful. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Kaufman. All right, so Dr. Brown reached out, just kind of come give an update on competency-based grading, where we are, where we've been. I was actually kind of reading through some minutes and what a difference a year has made when we were here last May. So, I think we've taken care of a lot of the issues and concerns that were kind of in place at the end of last school year, which was our first full year of implementation. So, make sure I hit the right buttons here. So, just kind of a quick overview. So, these were kind of the highlights, just kind of wanted to update everybody on. Kind of chose these four topics because this is kind of where most of the discussion was throughout the year. Our Student and Parent Portal. We had concerns that parents didn't know how their students were performing. And Sarah, through X2, I think has done an excellent job to make the portal simplified. And as you'll see as we go through some of the slides, just kind of like, I kind of think of it as kind of like peeling an onion. You can go as deep as you want, or if you just want to see how they're doing on the surface, their overall grade, for many parents, that's all they need to know. Teacher Gradebook. We know as we shifted to the competency-based gradebook, there were different concerns about the number of screens, teachers had to toggle back and forth between adding, you know, one assessment that might have multiple competencies attached to it, just the number of clicks, kind of what we heard. And again, through X2 and our IT department, major changes this year. Teachers, pretty much everything our teachers had really asked for last year, we were able to kind of adapt the gradebook this year, moving forward. Department work. As with anything in education, the work never ends. So, as I have a slide, you know, the work continues in our departments as they refine assessments, rubrics, recovery practices. And then about a month or so, I had an inquiry about some grade distribution data, just as we had presented before, so I just put a slide together to show what it looks like at the end of Semester One. As we're currently in Semester Two, at the end of this semester, we'll have more data to share. Sarah?
So, I'm happy to come today to report on the many changes that we made last year based on parent feedback, student feedback, and teacher feedback. So, the first thing we wanted to show you is how we really simplified the Student and Parent Portal to make it much easier for everyone to know how their student or child is doing. This is the home screen, for those of you who are not familiar with Aspen. And again, we tried to reduce the number of clicks. So, that was a big complaint last year, is it took a long time to navigate. And if, Keith, you want to go to the next slide, we'll kind of walk you through the process. Yep, so when you log into the portal, the first thing that you'll do is click on the Academics tab. And right on the homepage of the Academics tab, you can at a quick glance see what your child's overall performance is in any of their classes. Now, the important thing, which is a little different from last year, is that everything is dynamic. So, when a teacher updates a grade, it automatically updates all of the different screens in X2. There's no midnight calculation anymore, and it's, again, immediate. We wanted to make sure that the visibility was very transparent. And again, like Mr. Richard mentioned, a parent could just log in here, see their overall performance, know their child is doing well, and that's it. Or they can choose to drill down, which is what we'll show you in the next screen. So, as you can see on this, there's some blue hyperlinks on the left side. If a parent or student wanted to drill down further, they would click on that link. So, the next screen that you'll see shows by competency how the child is doing in each specific area. And it also highlights the different percentages that are available for each of the competencies. One of the changes that we did make this year was we gave teachers the flexibility on how much to weight their formative assessments. So, this is an important screen that many students do choose to look at on a regular basis. Again, as you can see, there's an attendance summary, there's also the breakdown by competency, and the overall average that runs across our traditional quarters that we used to use. So, again, this is dynamic, and we're trying to reduce the number of clicks. The nice thing about this screen, that's okay, is that teachers also have that identical screen too. So, if a student comes to them and questions a grade, or they can actually click on that and see exactly what the student sees, so there's no discrepancy like there used to be. This is the next screen that, again, a parent or a student can choose to look at if they want to drill down even further by competency into the individual assignments. And as you can see in this image, it has each of the individual assignments. It has any assignment feedback that the teacher may have given. It shows the weight of an assignment, and again, the overall score. And again, this is updated dynamically. The nice feature about this screen is that a parent can still choose to receive an email notification if their student gets a grade on an assignment that's below the threshold they've set. So, if a parent never wants to log into the portal, they really don't have to. They can just have these automatic email notifications be sent, again, based on the parent's preference for the threshold. So, we've tried to really increase the amount of communication that parents have had and make that more of a conversation with their student. Another important thing that we moved to this year is teachers were developing their own recovery policies, and again, that formative percentage piece. So, we thought it would be important to have all of the course expectation sheets posted on the portal. So, if there's ever a question about a grade, the teacher can redirect the parent or student right back to their course expectation sheet that is seen by administration and also posted visibly on the portal for them. So, we're very lucky in Nashville because our teachers are very vocal, so we took their feedback into great consideration as we redesigned the interface for them. Again, reducing the clicks was an important process. So, one of the complaints that we had last year was around not having everything on one screen, you know, toggling back and forth, not being able to see everything at a quick glance. So, as you can see from these two screenshots, all assignments for all students are on one page. And again, the teachers do have the ability to drill down to an individual student if they choose to, but all the averages are there. And as you may notice, on this screen, you do see numbers and letters. If I didn't mention it earlier, in the portal, you can only see letters. Last year, we got a lot of feedback from parents that the numbers were too confusing, so we -- this is the only place where you really see those numbers, and that's for the teachers only, so that's not visible to students and parents. So, again, I think the feedback, and Mr. Richard can speak to this, as well as Ms. Bastid can speak to this as well, the teachers are really happy with the changes that we've made to the simplicity of the gradebook. As Mr. Richard mentioned earlier, we've shifted the way that we report out on the competencies within the gradebook. So, now, the assignments are separated by competencies, but we didn't want to add additional steps for the teacher. So, we added this functionality, which is called Multi-Add, which when a teacher makes an assignment, they can attach it to their separate competencies, and it automatically spits out those assignments. So, again, reducing the amount of time that teachers are spending inside the gradebook, but still making it accurate for the parents and students. So, this is just kind of a screenshot to show you that functionality. And the last thing that we really worked on was, again, taking teacher feedback into consideration, making multiple reports so that teachers could at any given time see all of their students' grades. They could print out what we call a progress report or monitor report for a student that has individualized assignments and the running totals. And also, there was a new report that Mr. Richard actually worked on, which is the Student Average Breakdown Report, again, that gives more of the math piece for those teachers that want to drill down there. So, again, we've worked really closely with Aspen. The many districts are actually following suit now to what we've done, because we've really made a lot of improvements based on teacher and student and parent feedback.
Good evening. This is an example of the ELA competencies that all of the English department use. If you look down, there's the four different competencies explaining what each one of them are. So, that's one, Course Communication. There's another one for Math. That one's a little bit hard to see, at least it is for me. You can look at all the different competencies that are involved with Math, Geometry, Probability, and Stats. And this is an example that's given out to the parents, like on Parent Open House Night. They get a chance to see that, and the students also get that, get these when they start the course. This is a course overview example sheet for English IV, where it explains all the different competencies. Also, the books that they would be reading at each grade level, the honors, extensions, and foundations. Some of the additional, sorry, texts. Some of the additional texts that they would be reading, and some required writing for them. And then at the very bottom, you'll see that those are the films that they're watching in that course. Some of the ongoing work Keith and I are working on at both schools are continuing to look at assessments and rubrics and recovery work. I think that's something that's going to be going on probably for a while. And we've been working on these things this year, and I would expect that we will continue to do those things as we go through to just, I think it's good practice to be looking at those things, but we really need to continue work on those. Do you want to add anything?
Nope, just I had reached out to our head teachers, as Mary Ann did here at North, and just, all the departments said that they just want to continue to refine assessments, refine their rubrics, to talk about recovery practices, just to make sure, you know, kids are doing, putting their best effort forward in the first time. That was something that, you know, we had heard last year, as well as our post-course recovery, which Ms. Rothhouse and Adult Ed has taken on, and I have some stats based off our Semester One data that it's seen that it's being successful. So, here's grade distribution. It's broken up by school. Says it goes back to 2013. This is some data that, you know, it also chaired last year and with the Implementation Committees. So, it seems like we're kind of a little uptick in As, stayed kind of flat with our Bs, Cs, our NCs, we're at 3%, but our Fs, you know, dropped down from a 14% last year to 10%. I did notice, when I had handed out this sheet earlier to Mr. Boucher, and I apologize, if you added up the percentages, I heard that comment when I was at home, and I felt bad. Withdrawals at 2%, audits and pass fails, I just left that out. So, if you add it all up, it comes out to about 97%. You had those in there, we're at 99-plus percent. So, just didn't want to think I was leaving anything out. North distribution, I mean, it's pretty crazy how close we are for two large high schools when you look at the data, when it's broken out. Again, Norths are an increase in their As as well, kind of flat with their Bs, dropping the Cs, little increase in their NCs, but again, 10% in their overall Fs. And then I added their percentage points at the bottom with regards to withdrawals, audits, pass fails. After Semester One, through post-course recovery, through Ms. Rothhouse and Adult Ed, North had 84 students sign up, South 92. Those 84, 92 students represented overall of 87 different courses. Well, 37 at North, 50 at South, it could be the same courses, representing 88, 99 competencies. Of those kids that had signed up at North, 67 of the students were successful, representing 29 courses. And at South, 70 of the 92 that started were successful, representing 41 courses. So, 137 students between North and South, you know, were able to recover their credit and do not need to repeat that course moving forward. And that is what we have for our update tonight.
Yes, thank you. I've got a couple of questions. First one is, is that about a year ago, you know, there was a lot of angst about problems with the system. At this point, would you say that most of those problems have been debugged?
Yes, I would. Yep, we, last year, Sarah and I worked very closely to work through a lot of the bugs, and happy to say, not that I don't like to work with Sarah, but we are seeing much less time of each other this year. It's been much better.
Okay, and if I could also do another question. One thing that's apparent to me, I think, more than ever, is that in order for a parent to really keep track of how their student is doing, they need to be able to access the Internet and go online and look at the system. So, you know, as this board knows, I've been concerned for many years about the, those families that do not have access to a computer and the Internet at home. So, as we move forward, you know, what I'm hoping is that this board will be able to, you know, figure out, is there some kind of a, like maybe a public-private partnership that we can, you know, look to provide, you know, maybe, you know, used computers that maybe companies will give up, that we could combine with a low-cost Internet access program? And I know those exist. It'd be good to have every family be able to have access to the Internet at home, for every student that we've got, their families should be able to access the Internet, in my opinion. Thank you. Anyone else from the board? Ms. Van Twyver?
Thank you. The Course Communications that you specified here, were the, are they in X2, or are they on the webpage with the Student Studies, or, or are they a piece of paper that was sent around?
They're a piece of paper that's handed out to each of our students, you know, usually it's the first week of school. But what we did this year is we added hyperlinks to the Student Portal and Parent Portal to have them there as well, to make them accessible.
So, they're in both places?
Yep.
Both places?
Probably on their portal is probably more specific to the course itself, and I'm going to look at Cam, and yeah, so their course expectations, which has a lot of the same information.
Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman.
Not related to your presentation directly, but it is a question about X2. I know last year, we talked about multilingual capabilities of X2, and there was a lot of that built in. Do you find parents in particular, or fewer students, taking advantage of that? Do we have messages in multiple languages? Is this available to parents whose language, whose English may not be their primary language?
So, last year, we spent time doing the Elementary Standards Base Report Card in Spanish, and while the fate of this whole process was a little unsure in the summer, we didn't actually do that for this current year, but we are working with Mr. Chopa and Student Services to get the report cards translated for next year.
In what languages, please?
We're going to work primarily in Spanish, although we have also looked at Portuguese. It's just there's obviously a cost associated with that, so we're working through, again, Mr. Chopa with that.
So, if parents at home wanted to volunteer, is that something you can accommodate?
I believe we employ people with four translation services right now. Mr. Donovan, I don't know if you could say that? I think, I think he has somebody that he works through specifically for that. I don't know about parent volunteers currently.
I was just looking at a way to reduce costs, that's all. Because you say we have somebody we work with, means we pay them. So, just alternative thought there. Thank you very much.
Any other board members? Mr. Halliwell?
I know I had a parent raise a concern to me at the beginning of this year because, so the recovery process is not the same for all types of classes, right? Correct. So, Math has a different program than English, and et cetera. Any reflections on that? It seems very confusing to parents and to students.
Last year, we went all the same policy, right? And we got a lot of pushback from teachers and, you know, some, because it was all, pretty much, you can recover anything you want as many times as kind as you want. So, in the committee, it had decided that we'll allow teachers to have some discretion. And I think what most likely happened, or did happen, is departments got together and tried to have some continuity, at least between departments. So, I think, I haven't heard too much about it, because I think once they rolled out and they practiced it and they understand what the, you know, the rules are in that class, I think everybody's been okay with that. I think some things I have heard where people are going to be reflective is the ability of what students can recover up to. There were some teachers, I think, that we sprung so far this way, they sprung back, you know, recover up to a C. And I think, you know, through our conversations here, we really don't want our kids to be partially proficient, we want to move our kids at least to proficient or better. And I think we'll see some of those changes for next year.
So, I understand what you're saying. I still think every year or every set of classes, it means that students have to try to figure out, oh, this is a math class, or this is a CTE class, and I have different rules about what I can and can't recover. So, while I'm sympathetic to those who maybe didn't like the top-down, somebody decided for them, maybe, maybe we could get all those heads of departments in a room, and they could have a big battle to decide who's right and come up with one set, because I, it just doesn't make sense to have that many sets of, I don't know how many there are, but there must be at least eight or 10.
Yep.
And I don't know whether we still allow individual teachers to do something different, even if their department says something else.
I think it's pretty much by department, and I don't disagree with you. I think it was just we had sprung so far, and then we had come back, so I agree.
Okay. Can we go back to the ELA competency? So, I think it was Mary Ann's, Ms. Bastid's first or second slide. This one. I'm sorry, I'm just going to be a little critical here of competency number one. Students will closely and critically comprehend and interpret a range of increasingly complex, etc. What does it mean to be closely and critically comprehending something?
I think close reads, they're really getting into the book, so it's not there, you know, skimming through it. A lot of our English classes now, at least it's out there doing annotation within the book, so they're really close reading, so they're really diving in paragraph by paragraph and critically analyzing that. So, I think it was just that we, do you want to pause me?
I, I hear you. Do you think if I surveyed students and they read that competence, they know what that means?
I think they would call it reading. I think we break it down to reading, writing, you know what I mean? So, I think that's the reading competency, and then that's how we would define it. I know what you're saying.
I just think we sometimes get a little carried away with, and maybe this, no offense to English teachers, maybe this because it's the English ELA portion of things, maybe the math one has got some formulas in there, I don't know, but to the extent possible, we should make sure that these things are understandable by everybody.
Yep.
And so, we don't need to get too flowery, I think.
Ms. Thomasetti?
I just wanted to clear up some of the questions that you had. So, when they hand it to us, it looks like this, but there is a further explanation as to most students, at least at North, I'm not going to speak for South, but we know the four competencies for English because they are consistent through all English classes. We're told that they're reading, writing, speaking, and listening are one, and then sort of like questioning to sort of... sort of like questioning to sort of gather either previous knowledge and like discussion, that sort of stuff. So, they are consistent throughout classes, and to answer another question you had before, they are, at the beginning of classes, at the beginning of the year, you're handed a two, three, four-page thing that summarizes everything you could ever ask a teacher, um, sort of recovery, stay-after days, emails, expectations, stuff that you may read. You're given all of that stuff at the beginning that you go through, that's what we sort of spend the first day of class sort of doing. So, you don't really have to relearn everything, it's more the teacher literally spends 90 minutes explaining everything you could possibly know, and then you're set in it for half the school year. So, it's not as complicated as it may sort of sound as they were explaining it, just personal experience-wise.
Let's see if the other side wants to beat up.
He does.
Let's go, Cam.
He's waiting. Mr. McIntyre, give him a shot.
So, a lot of us are used to kind of the types of assignments that are on there, too. So, like, when we look at reading, you know, we think of that annotation, we think of writing, we think of, you know, writing the essay on the book. When we think of speaking and listening, we might think of a Socratic seminar, that kind of thing. Um, and then inquiry might be, you know, like researching, you know, writing an argument paper, that type of thing. So, I think, I mean, I don't necessarily know if we need, you know, the official wording, like, I think when kids just see reading, you know, we know what that is, writing, we know what that is, that kind of thing. Does that make sense?
Okay, do I have time for rebuttal? No, I mean, I just-
I don't know, I don't know how far, how far down that road you wanna go, but go ahead.
So, I, I appreciate what both of them are saying. They represent a higher end of our student population. I just think in making it terms that people can access on their own, right, that they can read it and understand it, and I don't disagree that, I'm sure, at the beginning of every class, it gets explained, but just like you said, in terms of the, so it's great that the competencies are, are consistent throughout each year. So, if you had one way of doing recovery, you wouldn't have to spend any time in class, because once you were a freshman, you'd know how it all happens. So, that's my point, is, it's just sort of an unnecessary confusion to students as to which class I'm in and which recovery I can do, that's all.
Do you guys think Mr. Hallwell's got it, or do you wanna clarify things more for him?
No, I think, no, we're good.
You'll need to egg them on.
Dr. Moritaki.
Thank you. When it comes to technology things, I, I've learned not to try to debate young people, but I do have a question, and it's a simple one. A lot of parents don't get that same exposure, so do you know whether or not the students have to explain how this works to the parents?
That's right.
Wanna give it a shot? Go right ahead.
So, I know, at least for my parents, um, they ask all those questions. Also, there is almost every teacher, if not every single teacher, there's a small sheet that says, I've read all these things, and I've read them with my child, and I understand them, and they've sort of answered all my questions, and if I have more questions, I'll contact you. And they have to sign it, and then I have to sign it, and then we get to date it together. And if I don't turn that in, it's the first quiz grade that we get in most classes, so you sort of wanna make sure you go over it with your parents, because it's a, it's an easy quiz grade that you can sort of get over with, but it sort of forces you to talk to your parents about the questions that they have, the questions you may have, and the way that you can sort of go about dealing with the teacher in that sort of way.
Good job.
Excellent. Anyone over here? Anyone else? Very basic question. The ELA competencies, for example, are they exactly the same at North and South?
Yep. Competencies across the river are the same.
Everything, okay. Across the river?
That's how we say it.
No, I understand, I get it, I get it. Uh, yes, Mr. McIntyre?
Yeah, I just have one more, just quick thing to say. So, in my, one of my classes today, our teacher assigned a little grade calculation sheet to see where we were by the end of the year. So, one of the students asked her, like, I think they were at the B range, and then they wanted to know if they could get to the A range for that class. And she said something like, you know, she can't really tell, you know, where you're at right now, like, what the number is, because, you know, she doesn't really know what the number is, she doesn't really know where the cutoffs are for when they look at the number, and that, um, when, you know, you're trying, so us students are trying to calculate these number grades, and we're like, yeah, we don't know what this is, that kind of thing, because we're trying to figure out how we can, you know, get to the next level. So, she was saying something about how, when she looks at the numbers, sometimes they're not right or something. I don't know if that's true or not, but, um, it just kind of concerned me that teachers don't really know our grades anymore and don't have a control over them, almost, because, well, what I like to relate to is we had the 100-point scale for years, so pretty much teachers across the board knew that an 88 was a B+, and a 90 was an A-, so now, I'm not sure that they really know, like, what we need to do to get to the next grade range, because they're not really as comfortable with it, with the numbers. I think they're comfortable with the grades themselves, but just not how they're calculating overall, so.
And the numbers are there, and I'll let Sarah talk to that, but one of the things we wanted to do, Cam, too, was not just to have people chasing points. You know what I mean? If you wanna raise your grade from a B, I'd say work to get an A. You know what I mean? That overall, when you average those things out, it's probably gonna raise your grade, um, and not just look to see, I need to get a B+ on this one and then an A- on that one. So, that's what we were trying to move away, you know, in that thinking of, let me just get two more points. Well, as you know, we've had a lot of occasions about points, you know what I mean? It's about the rubrics and where you're at. Proficient with distinction means something, proficient means something, so, but those numbers are there, and I'll let Sarah kind of talk about where those are.
Yeah, so I just put up on the screen again, this was a report that we created for teachers just for that exact purpose, which is the student average breakdown. And also on their screen, there, when they log in, they can see the numbers at any given time. So, I think kind of what Mr. Richard is saying is we're trying to encourage teachers, you know, to work with the students more proficiency levels than numbers, but we have, um, all those calculations are available only for teachers, though.
All right.
But I think that's a good idea for professional development. We could certainly work with the teachers more on better understanding that, if that's a concern.
Yeah, because a lot, a lot of times what happens is, like, student will be at a 3.37 and they need .01 to get the next grade point, and they, they don't really know that, the teachers don't know that, you know, it, it could be one grade that's holding them back, and that's what they don't know, because they might not recognize that they're only .01 away, that type of thing, so.
Okay. Uh, Dr. Moritaki, and then Mr. Kaufman.
Yes, thank you very much. Actually, I think that was a, a pretty interesting observation about the teacher not being able to, you know, precisely answer the question of, you know, how much would it take for me to get to an A or a B or whatever that next score would be? I confess that I used to be one of those students who, you know, looked to become the valedictorian and get into really good schools and get Whopper scholarships. And so, it would be, I think, good for any grading system, whether or not it's a 100-point scale or not, to allow the teacher to be able to kind of like, if you wanna call it wargaming, essentially to war game the system, and to be able to tell the student and the parent, what does that student need to do to improve the grade? And I think just saying, you know, work towards being proficient with distinction is kind of a vague answer, and as a student, I would have found that tremendously unsatisfying. So, i- is it possible to, you know, essentially play with the system and, uh, you know, we call it simulation or scenario development or whatever, but it'd be nice if there was an ability to play what-if games with the system.
And because we're now dynamic, like, the scoring's dynamic, so if a teacher put in an, an assessment and hit it, so it's not possible, we can work with Cam to say, if you got a B on this, let's put it in, your grade's this. If you get an A- on it, you show your overall. If you got an A+ on it, so there is that ability to do that, just like you said, you'd be playing around with the system.
Right, so that, the teacher just didn't know how to do that, because the teacher had not been trained on that possible capability of the system.
Yep, and we can give PD on that.
Well, thank you very much.
Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you, thank you. I guess this is somewhat related to Mr. Dr. Moritaki's question, and something that came up last year, I recall, there was confusion as to how does somebody get that highest proficiency score? That it was, the rubrics were, didn't, weren't necessarily clearly defined in terms of, do this and you've got that for, or whatever that number might be. And I'm just curious if there's been greater clarification. You said the teachers were reworking some of the rubrics, just, you know, maintenance and-
Yeah, I think they're always working their rubrics, but again, different from last year, I haven't heard as many conversations like that from students, I think, so I believe our teachers have done a much better job communicating on how to get to the different levels.
Right, but if we look at the grade chart, I guess at the end, the, uh, the As are down compared to a couple of years ago. I mean, in the, we really have shifted from the A range to the B range on, you know, some significant, uh, what, nine, 9% in four, 5% elsewhere. So, I'm just concerned that, we don't, we want the high achievers who are really working to get the grades they're working for. And to ensure that that happens, the definition of what it is to earn that needs to be built into the system, so, just, and I'm curious, Cam, because I know that last year, you were, you were all on, I still have, I want you to know, that sheet that you shared with us, uh, when you calculated your grades, so I'm just curious what your feedback is on this.
Um, teachers are de- definitely more clear about what an A is now. Like, I know teachers, like, the whole doing extra work thing to get the same grade as you would two years ago, I feel like that's kind of gone now, and it's, a lot of that is incorporated into the question you're being asked on an assignment, or the task you're being doing, or the task you're doing. So, I don't know if, whether it's a big concern anymore. I, I still do think that some kids struggle with, um, you know, getting to the A sometimes with what they're doing, because, you know, an A requires you to, um, you know, think more critically kind of for when you're doing stuff, so, uh, I, I think it's definitely more clearer, though. Definitely, yeah.
Thank you, glad to hear it. If you're happy, I'm happy, let me just say it that way.
Wow. Ms. Thomas, Eddie.
Oh, uh, something else that I wanted to point out is that you were looking at the percentages of As and Bs. Um, a few years ago, having an A meant that you were doing exactly what you were told to, but now, to have an A, it means that you're going above what you're being asked to do, which is why it's proficient with distinction. It sort of has a different meaning to it. If I get an A now, it's more of like, I did above what they were wanting me to do, I analyzed even more critically, I did extra work, I made sure that this was perfect and didn't have as many errors, as opposed to, it had few errors, there were no errors in it, rather than just, now you'd get a B for stuff that you may have been able to turn in and get an A for before, just because now it has a more defined rubric and isn't as, like, personal, sort of grading-wise.
Mrs. Eam.
I, I guess, um, I'm a little confused on the recovery data. Um, I look at that, and it doesn't, um, I know less than I knew before I looked at it. And I guess my thing is, like, um, if there were 88, it's confusing, it's very confusing to me. If, if, if 42 kids, it looks like 42 of the kids didn't recover in total. So, those 42 kids, that, the others who did recover, did they recover at the D-, or did they recover at the C-, where did they recover? Do you know what I'm saying? Were, were they recovering, were they really recovering, or were they just getting their nose over the line? And, and, uh, I guess even breaking, I would, I guess I would love to have this information broken down for me, probably because I'm not as smart as the other board members, so, so maybe I can have a private conversation with you guys and you can clarify it for me a little bit, but I would be interested in your comment on that.
Yep, no, grades, so when you are in, eligible for recovery, so the class has ended, and your overall grade is an NC, no credit. What that is telling you is you met half the competencies, but not all of them. So, for those competencies, you did not demonstrate a strong enough level of understanding. For those individual competencies, if you go through this process and demonstrate an understanding, you get a C- for that one category. So, you get a C- for that category. Your other competencies could be As, Bs, or Cs, when they get averaged together. I wouldn't wanna say every kid just ends up with a C-, um, there are kids that ended up with Bs, and there's kids that end up with Cs, um, because there are other areas might have been a strength of theirs and could have been a higher grade.
Am I right? And it looks like 25, it, it looks like about 25% of, of the total end up failing is the, of the total who, who took the recoveries. It does not, it's not, and I can, I was sitting here trying to pull out of my mind how many kids you have in each of your schools, so that I could come to a percentage, because that, that, that number's changed over the last couple of years, and I can't keep up with it, because it has changed. At one time, I think it was 220, but now, in, approximately in each school, but I think now it's quite a bit less.
Yeah, probably about 1,850 at South, and probably, usually like 1,800 to 1,850.
1,850 at South, and what was North?
Probably 1,750. I think there were about 100 different.
100, thank you. I'm gonna get your ear privately.
No problem.
That, thank you so much.
Okay, anyone else from the board? Mrs. Hohensy, and then Mr. Kaufman.
Could you, could you explain what the W, on the graph, the chart of the grading data, what a WD, an AU, and a P mean at the bottom?
Yep, WD's withdrawn, so a student might have moved or for other reasons left the class, um, so they're not penalized for that, so they get a WD on their report card. An AU is an audit, and there's different reasons why a student may audit a course. Um, and a P is a, is pass, so we have, you know, like, an ELO opportunity, you receive a P or an F, pass/fail, so.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Kaufman, I think.
Thanks. Just for my own clarification and recollection, so if someone take, if they're eligible for recovery because they had at least two competencies, they take the recovery and they fail, are they still eligible to take the class over? If they need that credit?
Yep, but they would take their whole course.
The whole thing? Okay, thank you.
That's it? Anyone else from the board? I think we did well.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you all for coming in, appreciate it.
Mathematically, I'm sorry.
Okay, great. Uh, okay, so, picking up with the agenda, we're now at the consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone wants to remove from the consent agenda? Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, I'd like to have the curriculum evaluation meeting minutes pulled out of the consent agenda.
Does he need a second? A second?
No, that's fine. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, with the exception of the curriculum evaluation, there was only one of those, right? Okay. Uh, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Uh, and did you wanna speak to that particular item?
I can, sure, thank you. So, by my recollection and reviewing the minutes, I noticed that, uh, the, the minutes as present, oh, sorry, yeah, the meeting minutes as presented did not contain the disruption that a member of the audience interrupted our, our parent when she was speaking. I also recall using some language, when I was speaking, I recall saying I had additional questions, and I remember saying something to the effect that I would, I defer to my colleague, and that language is not in those minutes. And I'll be happy to take it offline and speak with Jackie about it, if that's okay.
Okay, why don't you do that?
Yeah.
That'd be fine. There's no objection, Mr. Hallwell?
Just clarification, these are not verbatim minutes that are transcribed, so, there's often things that aren't, I mean, we have the video for that, if you want transcribed perfect minutes.
Well, we are-
Figure items to put in, I don't have a problem, just, I'm just saying that they're not verbatim minutes.
Okay. Uh, any communications outside the consent agenda that anyone has received? Seeing none? Public question, comment, period? Public question, comment, period? Where's Adam? He's real nice. Yeah. Yeah, probably, probably changing diapers tonight. So, anything based on the fifteen minutes, limited to items on the agenda this evening? I'll ask you, give your name and address, please.
Tracy Papas, twelve-Sport Terrace. I, I watched the presentation and I think what was presented in reality is very different. I know when this grading system was first presented, it was, everyone could do whatever work they want to, to bring up whatever grade they want to, then all of a sudden, I think there was a realization that there was no money. So, then it was, well, it's only the students that field. I also have concerns that I think when this grading system was presented by, by super, by the former superintendent, Mr. Conrad, I think that, I, I, I think that this board was under the impression that this grading system was mandatory. It was to hold students accountable, to make it more, to, to make it a little bit more And that's great, but I would challenge the school board to challenge themselves. Those of us who have been around for a while, I certainly will consider myself one of them. And having been a teacher and coming from a family of teachers and nurses, I've seen a lot of fads come and go. We're very fortunate that we no longer have schools without walls. The open concept schools were, that was, that was just an absolutely fabulous idea and everyone was going to be together and learn so much. The reason, in the younger grades, I put my students and my children to parochial school was that the latest craze then was the everyday math. So, I was fortunate enough to have a neighborhood school that's part of my parish that wasn't doing that type of math and we were quite pleased there. But being a believer in public education, we had always planned on sending our children to Nashua North. My oldest did have a very good experience here and I'm very pleased with the facility, I'm very pleased with the teachers. I am also very pleased with the administration here. What, what I find interesting is that it seems as if sometimes the Nashville school system does go along with items years and years ago, we're going to, we're going to start this, we're going to evaluate it. So, when we split to the two high schools, it was a block scheduling. And I remember one of the people, I said, I don't know why you went along with that block scheduling. Well, it was supposed to be evaluated in a few years. There are mixed reviews about that, but those that have stuck with the block scheduling have found that if you do every other day so that there's continuity with math and science, that works great. I've asked about that. We don't have the money eons ago, and I'm, I'm in my, you know, I'm going to be fifty-four this Friday. We knew that teenagers were just supposed to start school earlier, later, rather than earlier. Body clocks are very different. Nashua schools start probably one of the earliest at seven-twenty. Why can't we do something? We don't have enough money. So, I have to tell you that I find it really frustrating, very frustrating, that when we have extra resources, we use it on grading, we're going to hold those students accountable. I say to this board, you hold yourselves accountable. If you at least address one of those two issues and then you can go back and take a look at a harsher grading system. And I have full confidence in the staff here. I, I was actually quite a very cantankerous the last time I came and there were a lot of teachers here who, which I did find that only one side of the teachers had, were able to speak. I think the si, the silence from staff members who didn't believe in the system was deafening. The silence was deafening and it was quite obvious to me which administrators weren't for the system, the silence was deafening. And I think if you want the system, you fix the other problems first. You want to be hard on the students, you go right ahead. You fix one of those other two problems, either the continuity issue or start a little bit later, then you can go with the tougher grading. I think this grading hurts everyone. And, and I get that a lot of people who have, it's very, it's very uncomfortable to speak out against something. And I have to tell you that it would be unfair to, I think we had two excellent candidates, it would be unfair to either. I know, I know Dr. Brown inherited this. And if you say, we're going to wait, we're going to wait, we're going to wait till July, I know exactly what's going to happen. We're going to ask the new superintendent. Well, he knows this is already in place. He's going to be finding his sea legs. He's going to know that most staff that has spoken have been in favor of this. And I know exactly what's going to happen. If you don't put this on hold until you fix the other problems, we're going to be stuck with it for years to come. And again, I, I'm not a malcontent, I've been very pleased with the school, I've been very pleased with all aspects of it. And I do, I, I, you know, I, my, my oldest graduated, he's at Bryan, and I have, I do have a son who is starting his freshman year and is a very, very hard worker. And my youngest is nine, so I, I have seen, I have seen parents be promised in the past, well, we're going to get skinny classes, we're going to do this, because I first started maybe six years ago coming and, and then Superintendent Conrad said, maybe six, maybe seven, don't worry about it, we are, we are going to do these skinny classes. I was relieved, several other people were. We signed up for them. Nobody else signed up. Oop, then all of a sudden I hear, it's expensive. So, I have no problem with having students be held accountable, but fix the other problems first because you're, we're already at a disadvantage. Bedford does do a block scheduling and they do AB and they, they do the AB day so that, so that, so that there is continuity. And people, well, they have the money. Well, you know, that, that's fine, I get it. But before you go rogue with this grading system, fix the other problems first, because then you're holding our students to the higher standards and we were not told the truth about this, because in reality, it, it looked fine from the outset, but we don't have the money to do it the way it was presented to the public. And if you do not make a decision on this, if you don't put this on hold, we're going to be stuck with it, just like the seven-twenty time, just like, just like the, the block scheduling without the continuity. What does that do for kids who are really good at foreign language? That's something that's really important. And for kids who may not be great at math, they might be pretty good, they might be an honors level, they don't have AP level. And not all AP classes are year-round. That is the absolute truth for the foreign language. A kid can be done in January and take the AP exam in May. So, when we're looking at, well, what's, what's the problem here? The problem's not the students, do we have a, do we have, we have challenges everywhere. It's not the students, I can tell you, it's not the professionalism of the staff. I have been very, very pleased, it's not the administration. I think it's how we set this up. So, I'm, I'm happy to say that I am overall very pleased with the experience, but I think continuity is incredibly important. And for those kids who, who, who shine in foreign language, it's, it has, it's really been very difficult. And I think before we go ahead and start something yet again, and then we're, it's going to be in there and come July, oop, we don't have time to deal with it, we'll be hung with it for the next, I, I, it'll be there when my, when my nine-year-old hits high school. And that's not fair. I do, I do, I can appreciate all the time this board takes and I appreciate the time you folks give. But I really wish you look inward before you say, we're going to hold the kids accountable and make more, you know, so we know exactly what's happening. And I will tell you about this grading system, it's made up as people go along. It's not consistent. I think Algebra I has different rules than other classes and I don't have the math gene. My kids are hard workers, they are in honors, they're not in AP. But when someone wants, if you want to get help, there is no math book. Kids take notes. You can't take the tests home. Oh, we can't release those. It's top, top secret information. I had a very close relative who had this goal to get into the school, his reach school. He worked so hard and he did it. A friend of mine helped, helped him in math. The first thing he asked for was the book and the tests and the material. I can't ask my, I, I can't get any, how am I going to ask for a tutor? Well, we, I can't really get the class material because they don't give that out and they don't have a book. Our students do not have math books. And we chose, this board chose to spend the resources on this grading system. And I think it's a terrible shame. Do the city a favor, do our students a favor and get rid of this. Once, once we get some continuity here, once you want to deal with a couple of issues, fine, go ahead, hold them accountable, hold yourselves accountable first. Again, having been on a board, I understand the time and I get that this board probably has the most hours, excuse me, my allergies are working up, I was sneezing in the background, out of any board. And I know it's challenging and I appreciate all the work. And I have heard the teachers work so hard on this, on this grading system, there's no harder job in the world, there's no more heart, heart you put in, no more blood, sweat, and tears than raising a child. And no one can go back and change the years they had a child. And we should, we, we shouldn't be putting our students at more disadvantage than they already are. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joseph Papas, twelve-Sport Terrace. I'm a freshman here and I've definitely noticed some problems with the new competency system. First of all, the whole idea of the proficient with distinction, proficient, partially proficient, so on, it's kind of really subjective and it doesn't, the difference between proficient and proficient with distinction is not necessarily like shown very well by the teachers. It's kind of more like if they feel, but it might necessarily be that way, like, you can do everything right, but if you don't do it to their specific needs, like, what they like personally, like, you're not going to get an A, you're probably just going to get like a B or something. And it's just like, kind of inefficient because you can do nothing wrong, manage to get a grade in the Bs, which is stupid. And then another problem that I've found is that, the way the competencies work, like, let's say you have four competencies, you have A, A, A minus, and then you have a C plus. If you got an A in the competency, you already have an A in, it's not going to help your grade, even though it like, you'll actually be doing well, it's not going to show that you're improving, it's just going to say, well, it's the same competency you're already doing well in, so you're already proficient with distinction in that, but you need to improve in this one. So, like, yeah. And then another thing is the teachers do give out a rubric at the beginning, but I have experienced teachers who don't stick with it and they say they do, but they don't. So, they'll, for instance, I have a math teacher who said, so with the Algebra I system, for half the classes is you take a unit one, then you take a unit one, unit two, the unit one grade gets replaced, unit two, unit three, the unit two grade gets replaced, and so on. And then that technically counts as the retaking it, which it's really not because it's just forced and it's basically the same, it's not how it should be for the retaking as it is in every single other class. And also the teachers get to decide, like, how they want to do it, but they don't actually have to stick to the thing that they say they're going to stick to. Like, at the beginning, I was told that you could retake things within two weeks of it and all of a sudden it's changed and it's, oh, no, no, you stick to this, it's the built-in recovery. And, yeah, so these are just some of the problems I've personally experienced with this grading system. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that didn't sign up that would like to speak? Seeing none, moving on, superintendent's comments. Dr. Brown?
Thank you very much, President Farrington. I do have a, a short list here. The first is, just about a week ago, we were invited to present to the city academies. And this is an opportunity for citizens to come and learn about the different divisions within the city of Nashua, i.e. the schools, the police, and fire, and so forth. And it was a great opportunity to present to a decent-sized crowd, there were probably more than fifty people there. Mayor Donches kicked it off and his assistant, Kim Kleiner, was there to help facilitate. We gave information about the district, we started with sort of a mini tutorial presentation regarding the structure of the district, the board governance, the administrative hierarchy, how many schools, what some of our challenges are, and so forth. And then we followed sort of in the second half, we had two hours that night with a panel. And I had great student representation from our student reps here, along with Dan Donovan. Thank you, Mr. Donovan, for coming, we talked about the finances. Bob Chopa, Kyle Langill, Chris Breen. And the group took more of a town forum and answered questions from the audience. And they were thoughtful, it was a great dialogue, I think everyone wished we had more time. I brought down the curtain, as they say, at eight-twenty-five, because they said we have a hard stop at eight-thirty. So, I want to thank publicly again our reps for coming and speaking to the group. I seemed to get a lot out of it and I got a lot of positive feedback for that. It was also coordinated by Stacy Hines, I want to give a shout-out to her. She worked with the city staff, helped with the presentation together, helped me collect the feedback, and it was an evening that was very well-received. The second is on all-day kindergarten in Hampshire House of Representatives. I was speaking with Representative Mortaki earlier, approved SB 191, that would provide state funding for all-day kindergarten. The vote was decisive, one forty-seven to one sixteen. It goes now to the House Finance Committee. And Dr. Mortaki, they have until June first, it's, it's coming right up for them to do their work and decide to create something to, to bring back. I've seen a number of, a number of numbers for Nashua in terms of what the amounts could be, so I'm hesitant to, to say here what it could be, but it will be helpful regardless of what the, the final numbers end up in terms of helping Nashua move forward that initiative here. The next item is, I believe it was Thursday, we presented to the Aldermanic Budget Committee, Mr. Hallwell spoke to that earlier. Want to thank all the board members who went along with Mr. Donovan and my Want to thank all the board members who went along with Mr. Donovan and myself, President Farrington, to present to the committee our requested budget for 2017, 2018. The questions were good ones and we talked a lot about all-day kindergarten. We talked about some of the particulars of the budget such as electrical rights, Mr. Donovan. So I appreciate your expertise with that. I think everyone is aware that the next presentation is, it's not a presentation. It's the All-City Hearing, June 6th, and that's here at North in the auditorium, correct, Mr. Donovan? And the time is 7:00 PM. So I hope we're all having that on our calendars and you're able to attend. Another item for your calendar is the Sunset Heights Dedication Ceremony. That's going to be Tuesday, June 6th at 10 o'clock. You are all invited. So I hope that you're able to attend. And then the last item is the end of the year, big deal, and that's the graduations. So Nashua High School South is going to be Saturday, June 17th at 9:00. Nashua High School North will be Saturday, June 17th at 1:00. I love graduation. It's one of the few times, if not the only time, I get to wear my BC doctoral robe. So it's kind of fun. So you get to see those and we'll be there. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Board response to Superintendent's comments. Start over here. Anybody on this side? Mrs. Hoencey.
I have received calls from parents and students of students and family members of teachers who are extremely concerned over a recent vote of no confidence at their elementary school. The union president sent out a press release on April 7th, which the board indirectly received. Some students were sent home with notes in their backpacks, which included the 42 to 11 vote of the 53 teachers. I've even heard from parents outside the school community who are very concerned. Clearly, this information is out in the public domain, yet the board has been kept completely in the dark. The board has not been informed of the teachers' concerns nor of any proposed remedies. Our requests for updates have met with silence. I've been very patient, but this is very disturbing. Teachers can't speak out. As always, they fear retribution. They privately say that nothing has been done to remedy the situation. Parents of students are very worried about their teachers. I ask that this issue go to the HR Committee for a thorough discussion to make sure the working climate for our teachers has improved and to ensure the learning environment for our students has not deteriorated. One month of waiting is long enough. I cannot remain silent any longer. This directly affects our students, our parents, and our teachers at this point.
Mr. Kaufman, any comment? Anybody over here? Okay. Dr. Murataki.
Yes, thank you very much. Excuse me. So to the Superintendent's remark about the Senate bill that the House passed, it still has to go through a couple of hoops. You know, as she mentioned, it still has to get past the House Finance Committee. That committee has to make an up or down recommendation and then it cycles back to the full House. The full House then has to do an up or down recommendation. And all of that really has to be done, if I read my calendar correctly, by June the 8th, which is also the last day to form committees of conference. So in essence, by June the 8th, the House has to have made a final vote on the bill after it comes back from finance. It has to be sent to the Senate. The Senate has to ponder it and then decide whether or not they agree with the House, disagree with the House, or disagree and request to form a committee of conference. So all of that has to occur by mid-June. So we still have a little ways to go and you probably won't have your final answer by the time the Board of Aldermen looks at the budget next.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, one other thing. Last Saturday, I was pleased to attend the Air Force Junior ROTC Awards Ceremony. It's always an impressive event. This is the third year and it's really turned into an outstanding program that I think the entire city and this school district can be very, very proud of. We have about 100 cadets at this point, which is, that's pretty good for a third-year program. Just started up. Anyway, thank you very much.
Okay. Can we get the public comment and the sunset dedication on our internet calendar, our website calendar, please, so that I rely on that a lot to make sure I don't miss things? Anything from our student members? They've been very involved in the conversation this evening and had great contribution. Committee on Budget, Mr. Hallwell.
As Dr. Brown mentioned, we had the review by the Budget Committee, Board of Aldermen. Wasn't anything, interesting questions, interesting discussion. I think there was pretty much widespread support for the budget, as far as I could tell. So they'll be moving on. I think we were the first of the meetings on the review. So I don't think it's until the end of May that they'll be done with their review cycle. So we probably won't know until sometime in June as to what the final budget is.
Thank you. Committee on Finance, right back to you, Mr. Hallwell.
Committee on Finance, move to approve a paving contract with EJ Paving, although it does say paying, and I'm pretty sure it's paving, of Methuen, Mass. for paving needs at Ledge Street, Bicentennial, and Penachuck Middle School in the amount of $164,000.
Second by Mr. Kaufman. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of paving at Ledge, Bicentennial, and Penachuck, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Mr. Hallwell.
Move to approve the paving to be done at Nashua High School North. Do we now know the contractor, Mr. Donovan, or do we still not know the contractor?
I believe it's going to be EJ also.
Okay. Be done at Nashua High School North for J paving of, EJ paving of Methuen, Mass. in an amount not to exceed $50,000. I know it says 40, but if I get a second, I'll explain.
Seconded by Mr. Kaufman. Mr. Hallwell.
So I think the bid came in a little higher. And then in addition, there are some areas of north that Mr. Smith was going around. The area, so in the back of this building where it heads out, I forget what street that is, but the
Cheyenne.
Cheyenne, where it borders there, that's all dug up from plowing this past winter. And Mr. Smith wanted to do something different to sort of smooth out that whole area. So he would like to use some additional funds in order to have EJ paving take care of that situation as well.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor of the paving by EJ paving of Methuen at the North High School in the amount not to exceed $50,000, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Move to accept and place on file both the single audit for the year ending June 30th, 2016, and the quarterly credit card report.
Seconded by Mr. Kaufman. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
And next month, I think I'm promised by Mr. Donovan, we'll have our first real look at what he thinks we'll actually have left in the piggy bank at the end of the year.
Yes, that's tomorrow night.
That's tomorrow night. That's correct. That's next month to me.
Yes.
How's that? Committee on Policy, Ms. Van Wyver.
Excuse me.
Yes.
What, I missed the recommendation to accept and place on file the qua-
He combined them.
He did?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, let's see. The Policy Committee met on April 18th and we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 recommendations for approval tonight. The first one is on POPS policy IHCD, Advanced Coursework and Advanced Placement Courses. There's a very big change to that one. It's a one-word change in the second paragraph. So the committee recommends the approval and adoption of IHCD. Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoencey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Second policy is GCI, which is formerly 2360, on professional development. There were changes to the fourth paragraph detailing the professional development master plan. And the other change was to certify educators' individual professional development plan required under ED 512.03 shall be aligned with the district's professional development master plan. And a legal reference was added. The chair recommends the approval of GCI. That was the other change, was putting it into the alpha number scheme. Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoencey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving POPS policy GCI, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Ms. Van Wyver.
Because we just approved GCI, we need to rescind 2360 and I move that we do so.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoencey. All those in favor of rescinding policy 2360, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Again.
Okay, so the other thing is, let's see. Let me give my paperwork straight to you. ECA, right, District Security. The District Security Officer came and talked to us about this changes to it. It is changing the title to District Security, striking four or five paragraphs and adding three paragraphs to the policy. And so, Chair recommends the approval of ECA, moves to approve the ECA as amended. Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mosher. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. You're on a roll.
Once again, yes. Well, the final, let's see. The final one is ECAF, formerly Policy 5421. That's the only change to this policy is to put it in our alpha numbering scheme. So I recommend the approval of ECAF. Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoencey. Is there any discussion? Mr. Donovan.
Yes, not my area of expertise, typically policy. But in just, in reading this policy, there is a sentence in here that says media will become the property of the school district. It will be stored at the office of the superintendent of schools. That's the old technology when they had VHS tapes. We don't have those anymore. So right now, we have cameras that on a typical bus trip, they'll, it's just continually
Loop.
Loops around. It's about 10 days of bus. So we don't store anything. There's nothing on, so it's not a huge difference, but it's just a correction.
You were on a roll.
Didn't want to give you a perfect night, Mrs. Hoencey.
She was on a roll.
And it wasn't even a board member who shut you down.
I didn't hear anybody say they want to change it.
You don't have to. Just, you could change it next time. I'm just
We'll note the information.
Yeah.
And so the motion is to approve POPS policy ECAF. Is there any further discussion other than Mr. Donovan? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
And because we have renumbered this, we need to rescind POPS 5421. Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoencey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
That's it?
Super. Curriculum and Evaluation, Dr. Murataki.
Yes, thank you. The Curriculum and Evaluation Committee last met on Monday, April 17th. The meeting started at 5:30 and we ran about a half an hour over our intended time. We began the meeting with a public comment period. There were two topics on the agenda. One was middle school language arts and the other was recess before lunch. I'll give the board two guesses as to what all of the public comment related to. In any case, the public comment and the ensuing informational discussion on recess before lunch were, I think, very informative. The, what I myself drew from the discussion was that there is a lot of research on both sides of the issue, but there are a lot of organizations that involve teachers that support recess before lunch. The opposition in our district that came out in public comment primarily came from a couple of schools. And those schools, excuse me, were, pardon me, Fairgrounds and Bicentennial School, in which the administrators spoke up that there were logistical difficulties that essentially made it difficult to schedule recess before lunch. These had things to do with access to the cafeterias and the size of the classes that were rotating in and out of the cafeteria scheduling. And the teachers that did speak up from those schools were actually very much in support of their administrators. What this also led me to conclude, and it's true, is that most of the elementary schools in our district actually have recess before lunch. So the ones that appear to not do so apparently do not do so because of rather difficult logistics that would surround having to schedule the students to go and have their recess before lunch. And so it's for logistic difficulties, I think, rather than the desire to not have recess before lunch that I think essentially determined the decision by at least a couple of our school buildings to not have recess before lunch. So I think it was very informative. I had tried my very best to try to keep the discussion in curriculum and evaluation focused on the more academic aspects of recess before lunch, but we did actually kind of leak into the discipline aspects of withholding recess, which took a little bit of extra time. But it was difficult to keep the discussion simply on the academic aspects of recess before lunch. So what this meant unfortunately was that the middle school language arts discussion only had about a half an hour and we did not finish. So we basically, you know, curtailed the discussion on the middle school language arts. And so the first topic that we will continue with this coming Monday, the 15th, at 5:30, we will begin and kick off with a continuation of the middle school language arts discussion. And then we will follow up with two more agenda items, which hopefully we can finish. And those will be a discussion of the kindergarten curriculum. We're talking about having a questionnaire. And also, the, we'll also be discussing one other topic. Mrs. Hoencey, do you remember what that second topic was?
I thought you were going to talk about the survey for kindergarten.
Right.
And competency-based grading.
That's it. That's the second, actually the third topic.
If I might interject, I believe when we had the last meeting on April 17th, the middle school ELA went first and it took the lion's share of the time.
Oh.
It wasn't
So I'm confused.
It finished.
All right.
And then the RBL went second and they had diminished time.
Okay.
So it wasn't that we didn't finish. I thought we had quite thoroughly gone over it.
I was informed that the English or the middle school language arts still needed more time to complete their presentation. Is that not correct?
It's my understanding that they have made their recommendation. They stand on their recommendation.
All right, so we don't
The other topic that we talked about was
RBL?
No, the course, Career Pathways.
Ah, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. It wasn't on the bullet sheet for the, for that meeting. Yes, we did start a Career Pathways discussion. So that's the one that we will continue with. So I guess I was a little confused. My apologies. So in any case, that's going to be next Monday, the 15th, at 5:30 at the Administration Building. There were no recommendations voted by the committee.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hoffman.
So, yes, I agree. There were no recommendations made by the committee, but I do note that under New Business, there is some language which suggests there was a recommendation. It reads, "Recommend to approve the English Language Middle Arts Resource Adoption as recommended." As Dr. Murataki just said, there was no recommendation from the committee. There was a motion that never received a second. The committee took no action and made no recommendation. So I'm a little confused.
We'll get there.
We're going to get there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, committee, I'm sorry.
Okay, Committee on, I'm sorry.
Oh, Committee on Human Resources, Mrs. Ziem.
The Human Resources Committee is happy to move the approval of Sherri Fulton as principal of Dr. Crisp Elementary School at an annual salary of $98,750, effective July 1st, 2017.
Second?
Seconded by Mrs. Hoence, is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving Sherri Fulton, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Congratulations, Sherri.
Yes, congratulations. And then HR is also moves to approve the teacher principal renomination list dated May 8th, 2017.
Second?
Seconded by Mrs. Hoence, is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the teacher principal renomination list dated May 8th, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. That's it?
Thank you.
Move right along. Mrs. Hoence?
There's a one thing missing that I wrote to you in the email. There's the personnel recommendations approved by the HR Committee. It's in the packet.
But it's my
It's out on the agenda.
Well, I thought they were approved at the committee level, that we didn't have to bring them forward.
Don't we always bring everything from the committee to the board?
Usually. Often those are in the consent agenda, though I don't see them in the consent agenda. Yeah, they are. Well, what day was that, Ms. Hoence?
Uh, May 3rd.
Right, so they're in the, the personnel recommendations are always in the consent agenda?
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hallwell.
What's that? So that finishes up Human Resources?
That's it, thank you.
Liaison reports, unfinished business, new business, here we are. I move to approve the English Language Arts Middle School Resource Adoption as recommended by the teachers and the administration. Second? Seconded by Dr. Maritaki, is there any discussion?
Roll call.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah, I'd like to speak against this, for the same reasons I spoke about it, spoke against it last week. I'm concerned that the, the idea that we're going to give children in our district in grade six, seven, and eight textbooks that are now considered disposable, and they're going to be encouraged to write in them, I think is a failed model, considering the investment that school systems have put in place for probably 100 years. Please, children, don't write in the books. I'm concerned if we give them permission to write in one book, they'll forget which book they have permission to write in, and they'll write in all the books, and therefore destroy our investment in the textbooks that we have. Secondly, when I looked at that book, and I only had it for a couple of minutes, there's no index in that book. And I find that unconscionable, for a reference book to have no index. Very simply, they put up on the board a flash of something that said Constitution. So I said, okay, I like that word, let me go look it up. I didn't find it in a table of contents, and there are several, and I found it not in a glossary. And I'll, I'll be honest, I didn't look for a glossary, I looked for the index. There is no index. So if a student had an assignment on a sing, you know, Constitution, they couldn't find that in that book. I, the, part of the discussion that was made had to do with technology and its importance, and how versatile and, and wonderful it is. And I agree, from the enthusiasm of the teachers, they were very much in support of it. But if I put my hat on and I look at the book, the materials that the student was going to receive, I felt it was lacking and was insufficient. The idea that teachers can print things for the students is great, extra cost to us, but the point is, it relies on technology. And my concern is, it's technology we don't have, A, in the school, if the students start connecting to the websites wirelessly, we don't know what the implication is on our bandwidth. And most importantly, we talk about equity at home for students, I think someone earlier talked about a student, Dr. Maritaki, it's about students having access to Internet and adequate computer to do research and homework. This proposal does not account for the students who may not have, it presumes that they're going to be using their home computer to do their assignments. Yet there's nothing here that ensures our students at home in the middle school grades, because this is a middle school proposal for six, seven, and eight, actually have computers, have Internet access. Dr. Maritaki spoke to this about the beginning of our meeting. I would urge the board to wait to approve this until an evaluation is completed on the impact that this and other online resources has on our network. We have two networks, right? We have a wired network, we have a wireless network. The students will never get on the wired network, but they may very well easily get on the wireless network. And that is the most vulnerable. And just for sheer volume of data that has to be transmitted. So I ask for the, the board not to take action on this time, refer it back to committee, and delay it until we have information that can support the use of this on our network, and we know our kids at home are not going to be at a disadvantage if they don't have a computer. Thank you.
Ms. Van Pter?
I have just a clarification. The purchase agreement, or it said something about a five-year bundle, that, do you get that bundle all at once, or do you get it every year, so there may be a chance of upgrading materials?
It's a, it's a five-year license, and the materials are continuously being upgraded. The purchase price also includes a fresh copy of the workbook that Mr. Kaufman referred to each year during the five-year period.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Hoence?
Oh, thank you. I, I'm opposed to this. I, I think that the committee wasn't given enough time. We had to look at the books and listen to the presentation simultaneously. That's not adequate. We weren't even notified there was a pilot, let alone invited to participate, like we were with Eureka Math. I went to several meetings, I got to sit and look at the books, look at the various pilots, look in depth for the different grades. I got a, a real feel for the materials, and, and I liked them by the end of, of that process. That wasn't the case this time. The letter that we got in our packet says, "A written response to some of our questions were ra, that raised in curriculum and evaluation." I didn't see any answers to any questions. I don't see anything about a glossary, about an index, about how or when that will be modified. There's also a copy of the quote from McGraw-Hill, but there's no shipping costs. We're paying shipping costs, I mean, that's a lot of materials. I, I also am worried, it's not just the in-school versus at wireless, or, you know, plugging it in, in the schools, there's also at home. We're told the kids are going to do essays, what are they going to, borrow their mom's phone and sit there and type like crazy on a cellphone to do an essay, because it has to be submitted online? Will the parents be able to afford the, the data usage? Will they be able to find a phone in time to get their homework done? This hasn't been reviewed sufficiently, and I, I just don't want to disadvantage kids. I mean, if we're trying to help all our kids, this was poorly rolled out to the committee. And I would recommend that we have an extra curriculum evaluation meeting on this topic, and maybe on some others. We have a backlog that's, it's getting very, very long. I don't want to say, no, we're not going to talk about this, but I feel like we were rushed to judgment, we didn't get the answers we needed, and I'm not prepared to support this.
Dr. Maritaki?
Yes, thank you. You know, as the other two members of the committee have already pointed out, there were a number of questions that were raised. And so I think the question in my mind is, is there a rush to order those books soon? Or do we actually have enough time to, you know, get some answers to the questions that were raised by these other two members?
Can I, can I address the
Sure, please do.
Question of the questions. The company was informed of the, many of the questions that were raised that evening, questions such as, is this product linked to the Common Core? Response, districts that have adopted the Common Core use this resource, districts that did not adopt the Common Core use this resource. Question, is this, does this program require a technology-rich environment? Response in the letter is, it's used in districts that are technology-rich, and those that are not technology-rich. This Committee of Teachers has been working to evaluate this product throughout this entire school year. They've come up with their recommendation. If the recommendation is supported, they have a plan in place which would initiate PD for the implementation beginning this summer. The company is, is poised to provide that, PD, if the program is adopted by the district. So there is a bit of a time crunch, if the goal were to implement for the opening of school in September, yes. But if that's not the board's wish, then that's, so be it.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Ziem?
I, I feel compelled to say that I was very impressed with the committee. I thought they were, I thought they were wonderful. And I will be supporting this if, for no other reason than to say to them that I appreciate the hard work that they put into this. And, and to be honest with you, all of, our books are so obsolete, everything we have is so out of date. You will remember that one of my concerns was that, that so, out of our total district, how many of our books are 20 years and older? I, I have a feeling it's quite a few, it would be interesting to know how many. And so this is a, a small start in the right direction, and it will have my wholehearted support. Thank you.
Dr. Maritaki?
Yes, thank you. If my memory serves me correctly, the publisher was McGraw-Hill. And in, in the past, our experience with McGraw-Hill is that they are actually able to support the needs of this district, you know, very well. And that, I believe, would include, you know, modifying the materials that we get to include things like indices and glossaries. At least that is my, my, my guess. It's also my hope, but it's, I'm, I'm pretty sure that this can happen that way. In any case, I believe that the, the potential problems that were mentioned can be overcome. And like Mrs. Ziem, my intent is support this motion, and I would urge the other members of this board to do so. Thank you.
Mr. Boucher, did you have something you wanted to? You were inches closer to the mic, like you had something you wanted.
I, I thought of another area of concern that came up that evening, had to do with the cost. And there was, there was questions, there was a question about the cost of the adoption matching so closely to our budget. And my response to that is that, that the budget figure for this adoption wasn't developed out of thin air, it was based on a scenario that included the number of students in our middle schools and the estimated cost of the product. So that, that was the ballpark figure that was included in the FY18 budget. That was the origin of that figure for the budget. Subsequently, when we get to the nitty-gritty of requiring a quote from the publisher, we take into consideration the fact that there are, there are multiple versions of this product. That's a, there's a version of this product that provides extra resources for ELL populations, special needs populations, that's the $110 per student figure. That, to get that higher-quality product would have required us to go above our budgeted price. So there's, with the negotiations that the publisher began, this is what you've quoted us, and you have the numbers. We're not able to afford that, what can you do for us? And in response to the, to that question, in addition to the typical teacher's editions and teacher materials that are always given free with an adoption, they're also granting us 50 licenses per grade level, six, seven, and eight, at no cost. That's important, because we'll now have more licenses available than we have currently have students. So we have some flexibility if populations increase over the five-year period of the adoption, we would have sufficient materials available, not have to go back to the publisher for additional, an additional adoption. So I just want to clarify that on the, on the cost aspect.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Dr. Maritaki, I just brought over to you a written copy of the proposal from the vendor. And in it, you'll see there is, if they did in fact address the question that we, we brought up about a no-index or modification of the books, there is no mention of that at all in their proposal. I also note that we asked about professional development, we were told that it was included, which it is, but included in that context where it was provided as free, as part, this quote has a $12,000 cost for professional development. Because I asked about ongoing, and it said, oh, they usually just come back when I need help. I think this is a flawed proposal at this time, it needs more work. I ask everybody to reconsider, and I can appreciate, Mrs. Ziem, your, your empathy that the textbooks are old. But the ELL changes that Mr. Boucher was just speaking to is going to be in the online product. As best I know, it's not going to be in the physical book, that those ELL kids that may not have computer access at home are going to be able to take advantage of what's going to be on the Internet. And until we resolve that issue and the dependency of these materials on the Internet to deliver the promise for these ELL kids that may not have a computer, I think we really ought to wait. And to do so, move too quickly on this is ill-advised, in my opinion. Thank you. Can we call the vote?
Anyone?
You can't.
I'd just like to
Just talk.
If I recall correctly, the social studies curriculum that we purchased a year or so ago was more dependent on the Internet than previous curriculum. And so we, this is not the first time that we've gone down this sort of a road. Excuse me. And I'm not, I, I appreciate the fact that we have students who do not have Internet access. But this is, I believe, the future of education, and I don't think that we can wait until every single student has the, what we consider to be the best possible access. I'm going to support this, and then I am going to, I've, I've had some, just very general comment, conversation with Dr. Brown about, and I'd like to explore further, the feasibility of maybe piloting a, a loner program in one of our middle schools for students to be able to take home Chromebooks. Everybody who knows me knows I don't have a lot of expertise in this area. But I think it's something that we should take a look at, to see if there is a way that we can begin to address this, and maybe form a partnership with the local cable company. There, there are a number of things we can do, but I think that, that we need to take a more, more positive approach to this and move forward. And so, like I say, I'll, I'll be supporting the motion, obviously I made it. Mrs. Hoence?
Thank you. And, and that's a good suggestion. See, it's not so much that we don't like what we were shown, we just thought that it was poorly laid out and presented. The Civics, which was a fabulous book, had supplementary materials online. This one, they presented it to us that the kids will be doing homework on it. So there's a big difference, and it's, we just don't want to handicap our kids. So I don't think it's a like or dislike, it's like, we want to be sure, we want to do our due diligence. So, I mean, that's, that's our problem.
Okay. Mr. Hallwell?
Sure, so, I totally agree, it's, it's been a conversation for a number of years about student access to Internet, capability to do things at home. My next thing under New Business will be to propose that we either survey students by the end of this year, or come up with a plan. I had, I had made a request to Administration, I don't know whether they've come up with a plan yet. But I also agree that I don't think we should stop buying material. I think we can do both at the same time. I, I did, I did catch most of the meeting. I did hear teachers respond when asked the question about, what would you do if a student doesn't have access? And they did have ways of doing it. It's not perfect, it's, it's maybe, you know, maybe they can refine that over time. But I, but I think it's, it's not that half our students don't have access to the Internet at home, there's just no way that's the answer. So it's a smaller number than that, we need to work on that. I think some of the ideas of Mr. Farrington, I know I had discussions with a Comcast representative a year or so ago, they have a program, they were interested in partnering with the schools. Whatever reason, it didn't, didn't make it for me to get it to the, to the board. But I think pursuing some of those items, and I think maybe even setting, you know, when we get the budget back from the city, we when we get the budget back from the city, we might want to consider whether we set aside funds in order to make this happen. But for that, we need a bit of a plan, and we need to understand the logistics. So I support the motion to move forward on the ELL. I think the teachers did a great job of presenting it. I didn't think it was lacking. And I think they did a lot of work to evaluate it, and that's their job. Our job isn't to go through and look at every book and decide for ourselves whether we think it's right. It's to take the recommendations from the teachers and evaluate whether we believe those are the right things to move forward. I think it's a good program. Thank you.
Dr. Murtaugh, did you have?
Yes, just a quick follow-up in Mr. Halliwell's comment. In the city of Nashua, Comcast does have a program called Internet Essentials. The generic program is $9.95 per month for Internet access for students. I would certainly be supportive of getting something going with Comcast. Perhaps we could get an even better deal for our families. Thank you very much.
Okay. Everybody ready to vote? Roll call, please.
Dr. Murtaugh.
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver votes yes. Mr. Halliwell.
Yes.
Mr. Mosher.
Yes.
Mrs. Ziem.
Yes.
Mrs. Hohensie.
No.
Mr. Kaufman.
No.
Mr. Farrington.
Yes.
Passes.
That's on six.
Six to two.
Six to?
Yeah. I think so.
Okay.
Six to is eight, right?
That's right.
One missing.
Okay. So the motion passes. You said you had something new there. Mr. Halliwell.
Well, I had put in, when this discussion came up, I had put in a request to administration to be able to tell us how they thought we could evaluate whether students had Internet access.
We're bringing that to the principals at a meeting next Tuesday morning. I didn't press it in the last couple of weeks because they were still wrapping up testing. We'll get a plan together and try to get it done before the end of the school year.
So I think there's a couple, we may not want to put all our eggs in one basket, right? So, I mean, whatever we do, if we do a survey of students, we won't get all the students surveyed. If we do a survey of parents, we won't get all the parents. I suspect every teacher knows how many students in their class don't have access to the Internet. Maybe not. But we could certainly survey in that way. I guess I would also suggest that we might reach out to Comcast. I can give you the representative's name, assuming they're still there at Comcast, because they would know what kind of saturation they have in the city of Nashua, which would give you an understanding of what you should expect the general population to have in your school. So I think we need to get a few different looks at that particular problem so that we can fully understand the problem. I think we should also reach out to Mr. Farronkoff. I know Mr. Kaufman had asked the question to Mr. Farronkoff. If everybody had a device in the school district, would it all work? I'm pretty sure Mr. Farronkoff's answer was no, because we don't have the backbone to be able to have that level of access. So the question is, what level can we get to? Is there some kind of testing we can do to determine how many devices could be concurrently on the network and what we'd need to do if we wanted to improve that network?
Mr. Donovan.
And just to speak to that, Mr. Farronkoff will be at the Finance and Ops, and he is speaking somewhat about that, so maybe tomorrow night we could talk about that.
Great.
Great.
Mrs. Hohensie.
Under new business, I would like to refer a school psychologist policy to the Policy Committee. I've done some research. I've looked online. I know we don't have a district policy. I'm not aware of whether or not we have an administrative policy because we've never seen copies of those. I don't think there is one. I think there's a concern that parents should know, just know what the ground rules are so that we don't jeopardize ourselves legally, taking kids out of classroom, making sure there's a procedure to notify if it's an emergency, what constitutes an emergency, and creating a log that we can see at the board to understand the scope or the size of these emergency visits. Maybe there's one in a year. Maybe there's 500 in a year. We have no idea. So I'm just trying to make some general suggestions. I've modeled it on other policies I've found online for other schools. I just want to have a base, and I'm welcome some response from the school psychologists. I've gotten none so far. So it's been about a month, so I think it would be prudent to start the ball rolling and to at least, you know, put down on paper what the expectation is so parents know what to expect, so they're not surprised, so they can be confident that the system works and know what to expect. And we on the board are doing our due diligence in terms of oversight of this program that we have in our school. I mean, to have absolutely no policy or procedure on the books is a little bit open-ended, too open-ended for me.
Ms. Van Twyver.
I believe there is some talk in the special needs area, but I'll research that. I think there is some stuff covered in his whole manual that Mrs. Breen uses for this stuff, so.
That would be probably administrative procedure for special needs. I don't know. I, these...
Point of order, is there a motion? There was a motion made that wasn't seconded. I'm happy to second the motion. If we were just going to refer it to committee, we probably shouldn't.
I was just going to ask, does anybody have any objection to this topic being referred to a policy committee?
No.
Absolutely not.
Okay. You got it?
Yep, I sure do.
Consider it referred. Mr. Kaufman.
Under new business?
Sure.
Sorry, can I just, if you have a copy of something, it might be good for the rest of the board to see it.
I have one copy I could give.
No, I mean, if you wanted to email it to the board.
I could email it, yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. I too have, actually, I have two recommendations. Actually, I have two requests. I have two policies that I've written, made one. I have two policies I'd like to send forward to the Policy Committee for evaluation and review. B E D H, which deals...
Say it again. B?
B E Edward D Doris H.
Got it.
B E D H. Thank you. Somebody has sense humor. Public participation at board meetings. And the second one is B D E B, which is Human Resources Committee. And I have just minor changes to those that I would like to submit to the committee for review.
Anyone have any objection to those going to the Policy Committee? Seeing no objection? Got them?
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Man, we're on a roll. New business, never been so popular.
Well...
Dr. Murtaugh.
I'm not ready to make a motion. I do have a question. Recently, this board has had a lot of discussion and public comment on the topic of, you know, use of denying recess as a disciplinary tool. What I don't know is whether or not we already have a district policy on discipline, which may address or not address withholding of recess as a discipline. And if we do not, should we consider that? That's just a question, not a motion.
Mrs. Hohensie has an answer to the question?
Thank you. Yes, I do. I had, that was my next thing. I was given by a couple of parents. We have a handbook. I think it's this year's Student Parent Handbook for elementary schools 16 and 17. And on page 47, we actually have a recess policy. I think it's an administrative procedure this time, and it explains that recess is part of the elementary school program because ED 306, as you know, it's counted as time for instruction. And it says in here, "All children go outside for recess." It also says, "A child will be allowed to remain indoors only if we have a communication from the child's physician recommending that he or she remain inside." So it's a good starting point, but it's an administrative procedure. I also did some research, I'm sure Mr. Marku already knows about this. This is the AFT resolution from, this is the mother organization, not our local organization, and it's got a healthy student recess time. It's a lovely resolution, talks about recess before lunch, and it resolves two points, that the AFT will support legislation, or in this case, policy, for establishing recess as an important part of the curriculum. And it has resolved that the AFT will support legislation establishing no fewer than 30 minutes of recess time daily for our students. So I think they should be willing to work with us for 20 and to get a policy that puts all this together. So I'm hoping that's already on its way to policy. If not, I'd love to refer all these materials to policy. I thought we had agreed that we were going to, withholding recess needs to be discussed at policy, and we need a policy of how we're doing it. So this discussion, I recommend that this discussion go to the Policy Committee, just as Dr. Murtaugh recommended.
Would you ask me?
In the interest of, anybody have any objection to going to policy?
No.
Okay.
Oh, cool.
You may have to double up on meetings.
Well, maybe.
Yep.
Okay. Are we done with new business?
I think I have the answer. I think Mr. Marku was home watching us, holding Madeline, and he heard something, and I would be willing to write down on a piece of paper why he's here, but...
In fact, I was surprised because at 7:52, we get an email from Mr. Marku saying, "Don't worry." He was watching from home. And then when I looked up, he was in the audience, so.
Public comments.
Adam Marku, President of the Nashua Teachers Union for Delorean Lane. Yes, I was at home watching the meeting today. And then there's some comments that I almost fell out of my chair and had to come in. The press release that I issued to the Nashua Telegraph probably three weeks ago stated that members of the staff at a building in this district had expressed concerns about their building. The union went in, heard their concerns. We shared those concerns with administration, and they're being addressed. I don't understand why the comments, A, were where they were. They had nothing to do with what Dr. Brown said. And last time I checked, no one on this board was an administrator in this district and was involved in the investigation of what's happening in that school. And it's none of your business right now, in a public comment section, that you are now interfering and tampering with a confidential personnel investigation. So thank you very much for bringing that up in public comment while we work with the school district to address our concerns of my staff in that building. There are two assistant superintendent positions open. Maybe some of you on the board should apply so you can run the school district instead of telling the administration how to do it. I will end on a happy note. On Saturday, the Nashua Teachers Union sponsored a food drive at the Market Basket for N68 Hours of Hunger. We were there from 9:00 to 3:00. We collected over $800 in cash donations and over 4,800 items for N68 Hours of Hunger. We filled a 17-foot U-Haul truck. Now, they told me to rent a U-Haul, and I kind of go, "What do I need a U-Haul for?" Thank God I rented a U-Haul, because if you know what Saturday is like, it rained. I have to say, the community we live in is outstanding. There were teachers, paras, food service secretaries, principals, other administrators that came to Market Basket on Saturday just to buy stuff for the food drive. And then there were random people, former students, current and former parents stopping by, and it was unbelievable. So I want to thank all the people that were there in the rain and cold on Saturday collecting goods, the Somerset Plaza Market Basket for hosting us, and for everyone in this community that came out to support such an outstanding cause that we have in our city. Thank you.
Adam, let's only ask you a question. How is the inventory holding up in that program?
So we overstocked their shelves for them. I was shocked at how much macaroni and cheese a Market Basket carries on a Saturday. There was over 220 boxes of cereal that came in. So they were, you know, getting to that point where they needed to start going out to buy food with the donations. Remember, they're completely donation-orientated, so no one is being paid in that organization to do the work. The two coordinators do it voluntarily. And they were then concerned about where they were going to put it when we were unloading the truck, which I think is a problem worth having. They have space donated to them by the United Way of Greater Nashua on Broad Street, so they have a full basement now, full of canned goods and cereal and rice and macaroni and cheese. I don't know where they got it all from, but I'm telling you, everyone came out with that big 12-pack. I don't know how they didn't run out, so.
And how many schools are being served by the program? Four or five?
Right now, four. There are capacity in hoping to open a second chapter for the start of the next school year, based on what they told me. But again, that's a financial cost and support, and, you know, the more groups you have, the, you know, you draw from the same pool of people. So hopefully, you know, we can keep supporting them moving forward.
Great. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other public comments? Board member comments? We'll start with Mr. Mosher. You got anything over there?
Yes. I am so thrilled with some of the students that we have, especially the young lady with the volunteer award. You know, we have so many students who are so brilliant and so willing to get out there and do so much in the community and show their worth. And I take exception to certain individuals that write letters to the paper or make some kind of comments that all we're going to be doing is babysitting our kindergartens. But, you know, we have the kindergartens, and these kids grow up and go up through the grades. And when they get into the high school and when they come out, we have some really, really smart kids. And I take my hat off to them. I thought that my girls were smart, but I really take my hat off to these kids. They're really doing a lot. You see that, how they come out in the math and everything else. And the only thing I haven't seen, and that's kids that accelerate in chemistry. Chemistry, I loved that in high school, but that was the only thing that was any good in my high school.
Still time.
Yeah, it's still time. So I'm just going to put the B in there, monitor, say, hey, get out there and, you know, rattle the H2O, the S, yeah. The, okay, I'm getting ahead of mine. I'm tired.
All right. Mrs. Ziem, we're doing board member comments. If you have anything.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate how delighted I was that Sherri Fulton will be the new principal at Dr. Crisp. We're very fortunate to have good people in this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hohensie.
Thank you. I would like to thank Mr. Marku for coming down to give us an update on the vote of no confidence. I take exception to his chiding of the board that this isn't our concern. When it spills over into our phones and we get calls from parents and families and spouses of teachers, and it goes in their backpacks with data included, this board has a duty to do oversight. We're not doing your grievances, but sometimes there needs to be reassurance that things are working. And in this case, when it spills over, that was one of the cases.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, let's keep the focus here, please. Board member comments, and let's go on.
I also appreciate the competency-based grading update. We got a great review of the X2 system. Disappointed that I'm not hearing more to justify the pilot program. I'm glad that it's going to committee. Eight months ago, we had a vote on the middle school grading, and I believe Dr. Murtaugh asked for the administration to provide information as soon as possible to show that our grading system is improving learning. I'm not seeing any improvement. I've got a lot... I've got a lot of concerns about how recovery is implemented, and it discriminates. I think the sign that we are discriminating between the high and the low performance students is an indication that the process is, is not a success. It is a bit of a failure. Students are sometimes told that they're, they have graded and non-graded components on their assessments, and the teacher got frustrated because students improvised and they only focused on the graded components of their assessments, and they were told that they were going to be penalized for not answering the non-graded portions. There is a lot of inconsistency. Prior to this grading, this board never set a policy on how teachers graded their students. It was actively discouraged. Only the teacher sets the grade, and that's locked in in our teacher's contract, Section 8.6. "The teacher shall maintain the right and the responsibility to grade pupils based on records maintained by the teacher with respect to each pupil." I, I don't like inconsistent rules, and I think we need to start trusting our teachers and reviewing this objectively and getting to the bottom of it. If it penalizes our best students, if they're called grade grubbers and they can't get remediation, and we can't have a level playing field, there's something wrong with the system. And I'm glad it's going to committee, and I look forward to that discussion.
Ms. Kaufman?
Thank you. Okay. First, I would like to, and I have a hard copy, I can give you, Ms. Van Twyver, for the record. First, I would like to thank Mayor Donches and Mrs. Kleiner for hosting the welcoming event for Dr. Mosley at the Hunt Library that was held this past Saturday. Beyond that, Mr. President, I would like to speak in response to actions that I've experienced on my time on the board, and most recently at the Curriculum and Evaluation Committee meeting held in this very room. This time, I would like to publicly apologize to Mrs. Heather Seeny. Mrs. Seeny is the parent whose public comments were interrupted by an outburst by a member of our teaching staff at the April 17th curriculum meeting. This follows other outbursts at several other meetings in the recent past, including a budget meeting when audience members interrupted Mr. Teboom's thoughtful comments. To Mrs. Seeny and Mr. Teboom, I hope both of you will continue to attend and speak at board and committee meetings. Your input is welcomed and appreciated, and quite frankly, it's really why we are all here. What really concerns me about the interruption of Mrs. Seeny is the example, or worse, precedent that it sets for the future. Think about this for a second. A parent in the middle of reading a sta-, sorry. Think about this for a second. A parent in the middle of reading what obviously, what was obviously a well-prepared statement is interrupted by one of our teachers. What kind of example does that establish for the parents watching at home? Come to the school board with an issue that concerns you, and you will be shouted at and interrupted by a teacher. No wonder we don't see many parents at board or committee meetings. For me, this is nothing but an example of bullying at the expense of the parent. It was witnessed by six members of the board, two senior administrators, the union president, and the TV audience, along with a room full of people. Correctly, and immediately so, the committee chair, Dr. Murataki, intervened and stopped the teacher's disrespectful outburst and rude behavior. Disruptions and interruptions of duly-recognized participants cannot be toler-, cannot be tolerated by this board. These instances of recent behavior at our public meetings are the factors that led up to my proposal for changes to policy B E D H, which I addressed earlier tonight. Thank you.
Come on, on this side. Dr. Murataki?
Yes, thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
No, go right ahead.
Okay. All right. Once again, I'd like to offer my congratulations to both the major retired Brian Newton, who is the head of the Air Force Junior ROTC Program, and to Principal Bustead, who also is very much involved with that program. Both the Air Force Junior ROTC Program and Nashua High Schools have built a really good program. And this is despite a number of issues that occurred during the first two years, like, you know, losing the Air Force Chief Instructor, et cetera, et cetera. So they've gone through some serious bumps that normally could have caused a beginning program to actually fail. But through the impressive leadership that was, that emerged, this is a great program. And it looks like the students that are involved like it a lot. At least, that's the impression and feedback I was getting. Also, very senior retired officers that I spoke with were equally impressed. And I'm, I'm an Army veteran, so I was also very much impressed. I'd been through a senior ROTC, so this junior ROTC unit really impressed me. The second comment that I have is actually towards Mr. Adam Marku. Congratulations. Yes, and thank you for coming.
Mr. Hallwell?
Thank you for coming. Sorry you had to come.
Our students, anything, any final parting words this evening? No? Ms. Van Twyver?
Well, thank you. Now that you've put me in a great mood, I attended the award ceremony where five of our district people, four students and the teacher, won an award by the Women in Technology. It was really remarkable, and I was so proud of it. I've been following Jillian, oh, this is the third year. Went to her first time that she won the award, and then all the other things that she's been participating in. She's really a good representative, smart gal. I'm so proud of her. So I just want to know that she's appreciated. I wish I could have attended the award ceremony by the military thing, but unfortunately, I couldn't. I'm very proud of them, too. It's good to have them on campus.
Thank you. I have no comments for this evening. Our next meeting is Tuesday, May 30th at 7:00 PM. I don't think we have anything required after this, right? Mr. Hallwell?
We adjourn.
Seconded by Mrs. Hohensie. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We're adjourned at 9:20.